Cooperative agreements with our professional organizations and other communities. In other words, there may be an initiative in which three or five or 20 communities get together. And currently, we have four very active initiatives going on, I just use that word. Topsfield belongs to a 14th community coalition that works on public health emergency preparedness. We get things done that none of us would be able to do individually. And as a coalition, we are one of five in northeastern Massachusetts. And we belong to four other, so there's a five discipline as well. So there's a very good look at how we are different, but we are members of the community at large, as well as across the state. Also, tobacco regulation enforcement. We are part of an 18th community coalition, and it meets regularly. Also mosquito control and surveillance. Another savings to the town, costs money, however, we get services from specialists that, to ask the local board of health staff and any other employees of the town to handle, as was the case back when the West Nile virus first came, it would be cause prohibited. And we also have modernized the food code, modernized our approach to food code only in conjunction with, or in collaboration with 14 other communities along the west shore. And we use the federal money to hire a consultant to assist us to do that. I've been asked at previous budget discussions to boil it down, to be able to say to the Board of Selectmen, FinCom and citizens, how much money we are getting from other sources. And while I think it's a reasonable question to ask, the truth is that the services that we get by belonging to these collaboratives cannot be boiled down that far into a dollar and cent figure, because we have access to professionals. And the mere membership with these organizations means that we are addressing those subjects. And that I, as a professional, have access to people who specialize in these areas, and that means I do not need to. If you want to add anything?
Right.
Well, if there's questions, I know everyone's got their, um, on their own.
I have no further questions really. I've said it all, all I need to say, I appreciate the work you do, and appreciate, appreciate the work, obviously.
Sure.
But the question does stand, as you let me ask, what could we do to reduce the budget if we have to? John, very often we explain the value of having somebody always available to the citizens of the town, but the town may be willing to go for what we had just many, many years ago, which would be less. So I think, I think you need to keep that in mind, because this is, in many ways, what we've done in the last few months is expanded what we provided, which is good for services, but not good for budgets, so to speak. So I would ask you to think about any ways that we could reduce it. One of the things I think is important for anybody that's here listening, your other budget is $20,000, and you kept it zero, that's, that's great. A key, half of that is the visiting nurses program, which is, again, a service that we're able to get. We don't try to do that ourselves, it's very difficult. But they, they do provide those services on a monthly basis, come to the town, and many pieces that they also do as far as maintaining vaccines if necessary, and doing the vaccination programs associated with that. So that's a big item, but if any of those other items are something that we could reduce, we don't have to keep it at zero, even nicer to call less, but I appreciate where you are with it, by keeping it at zero. But I'd ask that you think about in every way, how, if we have to, you can reduce that budget. And maybe it is a reduction in availability of services to citizens, just as it is with buildings, you know, you come in on a Friday and there isn't somebody, but everybody knows about it, we put it on the website and such as that. I'd just like to leave it at that, to please keep that in mind, and think about what we might do if we have to, what you might do if we have to.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you guys very much. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Jonathan Graham.
Okay, now, we want to do fire department? Okay, Ms. Brown, you up?
At this point, Chief Harris just texted me, said blame the old chief.
Say what?
Chief Harris just texted me, said blame him.
Blame him. It's always easier to blame the guy that's not here.
Right. I just want to share with you our mission statement. Our mission statement, we developed about 20 years ago, hasn't changed. We review it from time to time, just to look at that, and, um... I appreciate everyone having me here. I learned a lot two days ago, and I went back and reflected a little bit. And I'm in the unique position of one of the, being one of the few department heads who lives in town, and pays taxes in town, as does the vast majority of our departments. So nobody needs to lecture us on taxes, and, and I want to share with you just a couple of things that we've done to try to be fiscally prudent. So I just, I haven't gotten a chance, my budget is within guidelines almost, quote unquote. There was contractual for the administrative assistant, there was using the pay grade increase for her. For my contract, there was missing a piece of education and conferences that was in there, as well as the 2% that was in my contract. Both my full-time firefighters and the call firefighters' unions are in negotiations. And the only other thing that we looked at in trending was the medical supplies. Our medical supplies, we've consistently overspent that, and that is, at virtue of the medical calls, have increased by 18% over the last four years. Those are for disposables that can't be reused, like oxygen masks, bandages, Band-Aids, blood glucose strips, believe it or not, they cost $1 a piece, if anyone's a diabetic, they know that. So that was the only thing that we looked at. It's a pretty tight budget. There's, I have all the same concerns that Chief Haglen has about an older building. And if I could just share, if it's okay, if I could just share a couple of things that we've done. Just to bring you up to date, staffing, we are great. We are really great. John Boyle was hired, as you know, you met him, to fill my position. In the last couple of weeks, we received retirement notices from Chick Denal, Jerry Falto, and Donnie Wood. So each of them have put tremendous amount of years of experience in the department. They're retiring for other, to go on to other things. So right now, we're accepting applications for Chick's position. At this point, it's advertised as a full-time paramedic firefighter and not a captain's position. So we'll assess our rank structure as we move forward, but he's a, it'll be a firefighter After the full-time position's filled, I'll go back to recruiting call firefighters. I don't want to confuse the two. As you know, we've talked about it before, it's a national problem. Currently, we have two active call firefighter applications, but one of the people is on the other side of Danvers, so it really doesn't make any sense as a call firefighter. But we'll still work with him, and I'll look at him. The last three call firefighters that we hired are very active, they're great. One of them is in the Call Volunteer Academy, and the other two are registered for EMT programs starting in January, so they're coming to a lot of calls. They're really great, they're really nice teamwork together. Recently, our staff was recognized at a regional awards ceremony for our team approach to the resuscitation of a cardiac arrest victim. And one of our telecommunicators at the REC was recognized for her role in the REC and the development of it. So we're really proud of that. Our building deferred maintenance seems to be the hot topic, and we are definitely a victim of that. Since becoming chief, I've helped, worked with everyone, and we've established a formal maintenance plan for the vehicles of our building. And we've been really resourceful in some of the repairs that we've made to date to improve our infrastructure. We worked with the Historic Commission to replace four doors that were see-through, rotten, and were letting in the elements. We had the asbestos abated on the second floor, which included removing the tiles and the mastic, which tested positive for asbestos. We had the second floor painted, using prisoners from SS County House of Correction, so we just had to pay for the painting, the paint. We had holes in the back wall and the back chimney of the station repaired, and replaced the gutter in the back, because we're consistently having water come into the offices in the back. We also had, there was a gap between the building and the parking lot, so we had the Highway Department filled out with binders, so hopefully we will not have water coming into the back of the station. We revamped our watchroom, which had not seen any changes since the building was constructed. We worked with students from the Topsill Vocational Academy, so therefore began, we paid only for materials, and working with them, they did all the design work, which was, they did a great job if you ever stopped by. We worked with the, our staff worked with the Historical Commission, our staff removed all the shutters from the building, sanded, painted, and rehung the shutters on the building. So people are really dedicated to being pro- gold, there's a lot of talented people in our department. Some of our staff repaired rotten trim that was upstairs, repaired walls in the bathroom, really make a concerted effort to, to take on some of the repairs ourselves and do the best that we can with what we have. That being said, the Building Maintenance Fund is, is, there's a lot of money in there, and we need to look at the roof, the roof is leaking, the broken roof in the back is leaking, which is causing the ceiling to fall in. So those kind of things, the same thing as Chief Haglen, there are older buildings that need to have work done on them. We also had some, not the same plumbing issues at all, but we had like mixing valves that didn't allow the water, the water was red hot coming out the boiler, and you just can't have that. So some safety issues that we corrected. So we've done a tremendous amount with people, with the building, working in emergency management, our Homeland Security, we had filled out all their paperwork for the Topsill Fair, and they just assigned up a Sears rating, which is, it's a value of five, which is a security event rating that they have, which means, that just means it's pretty much their lowest risk for our national security. I don't know if anyone knew that, but that generally, it's important, it's nationally recognized, but locally important event. We completed all the paperwork for the risk assessment for the October storm, we actually had some damage in our fire station, and a lot of our residents had a lot of damage. But the come of the Massachusetts did not meet the threshold for an emergency for that, so there won't be any, any funding coming from that. We've had monthly emergency management meetings, and we've just applied for $35,000 in grants to implement the school evacuation plan that we had done at the tabletop two years ago, and then another plan with the Topsill Fairgrounds. We're in the process of disassembling our fire alarm system within the town, which you see on there, as we're going to move to central station monitoring. Our telecommunicators at the REC are dispatchers, they're life safety dispatchers, they are the only person listening to us, they should not be monitoring fire alarms, trouble alarms. On the opposite side of that, we're not alarm technicians, so we shouldn't be dealing with central pole loss, and all those other things that come with alarm systems. So we should either be all in or all out, and we're going all out.
Excuse me, Jen, in light, these, for people who have private homes with central alarm systems in the home, and essentially be a responsibility of their provider to take the call, and would they forward that, or not?
They do. That's how, it doesn't affect the residents at all, it affects the town buildings and a couple of businesses.
So instead of going directly to the fire station, it goes to REC, and then REC puts it in there, normal process?
Right, right. So now this time, it'll just be monitored by a professional alarm company, and then they can deal with the telephone tree to get the person, the person who's responsible for that to, if there's a problem, like a trouble alarm, which has basically been me, and it's not, I just don't, I'm not, it's not my level of expertise, so...
No, I think that makes, I think that makes a lot of sense. But the other question I would ask on that is, so in terms of changing how that happens, that will be entirely transparent, so that your number will be ported over to go to the REC, so that people don't have to change the alert that's in their alarm system?
Everyone who is on, there's 25 radio boxes, it's a kind of a long process, but they've all received certified letters, they all know. The businesses that are on our system have been thankful, they have not paid any money for a long time. They all knew, we've been talking about this for a long time. The municipal buildings, some of them are already monitored, like the Water Department, Highway Department, by other companies, because they have other, you know, low water alarms, chemical alarms, they have other things that we don't monitor, so...
Yeah, okay.
So...
But to homeowners, it's transparent?
To homeowners, it doesn't affect homeowners at all.
Excellent, thank you.
Not at all.
Yep, so I wanted to know...
Just coming back to the town buildings then, so the town now needs to negotiate with somebody, we do our contract, and get somebody to provide services for our alarm, uh, station, the police station, and town hall?
Each of the building owners, responsibility, not owners, but department heads are aware of what they have to do. So as I said, for instance, like a police station, we monitor their fire alarm, but they also have monitoring through someone else for security, for their evidence room and stuff like that. So they all know that, again, this is something we discussed at Public Safety Meeting, they all know that they need to negotiate with their provider.
I'd just like to understand for budget purposes. We should be seeing, we should be seeing something in the change in their budget for other...
Maybe, or maybe not, because they already, this, we were, in some places, places like the library, we're duplicating services that we already had.
Okay.
So you, in some places, you'll see no change.
Okay.
Some people might have a little change, but...
Well, we save some money as a town because of this. Something goes away, it sounds good, and it says if we provide...
If we had, if we didn't go away, it's like, almost like a negative, if we didn't go away, there's a $2,500 licensing fee for the fire alarm work, plus every time there's a service, that was what happened, was the REC paid that, $20,000. Last year, that happened to be $20,000 in our system that needed repairs, and I'm not prepared, we don't have that money. So by that point, that person, the people in charge of the building, so whether it be the cemetery building, they'll be, have to deal with the problems, and not us as a group, so...
Not the fire department. So this is a matter of, okay, I think it's a good approach, I'm saying that, but we should, for our own understanding, theoretically, at a high level, we should see, if it costs $20,000 less you to maintain parts of the town buildings, that $20,000 that was paid by the REC, not by the fire department, by the REC, good, is going to come back to the individual organizations?
Maybe, or maybe, maybe or maybe not, because, first of all, the fire department did pay the licensing fee, that will come...
The $2,500?
Yep, so that will come on...
So you have a saving in $2,500?
Yep.
Okay. But the others would have some cost because...
Maybe, or maybe not, because it depends on if that emergency work was for their building or not. So like I said, most buildings, it's duplicate.
Okay, everybody's aware of it next.
Yep, and then, um...
Come on, tell you right away.
No, sorry. And then you're awarded an EMT grant, that's an emergency management grant, we bought bulletproof vests, we're working with the Police Department to do that. In reference to like that question by, that John you asked, this is not Mayberry anymore. We're, I've had a knife involved with me twice in Topsfield. It is not Mayberry anymore, it is dangerous. And so, excuse me, to that, and 10 years ago, if you'd asked me, would you have bulletproof vests in your vehicles, and I would say absolutely not, without question. We have bulletproof vests now, and we'll wear them. We applied for a $5,300 state grant, which is for students and seniors. We were actually awarded a $6,500, so we were awarded more than we asked for, which is great. So we'll continue with that. Goals for the upcoming year, we have to replace our chaplain, our chaplain resigned, so we need to replace that, that's in conjunction with the Police Department, we've kind of been working on that. We're looking at accreditation, just kind of an external source looking at us. I'm looking forward to getting both contracts settled, which will help me improve our biggest issue, which is nighttime response. And then review all SOGs and make them web-based, that's sort of one of my things I'd like to do.
What was it, the what, web-based?
Uh, SOGs, standard operating guidelines, because right now, they're, things need to be updated, and it would be better if they were web-based, so everyone could, anyone could see them. Like Phoenix, Arizona, you can go to Phoenix Fire Department and see theirs, and theirs are the best anyway. So as far as that, I didn't do anything really big, except that $2,500 of the medical supplies, and I tie that into the...
Could I just come back to some of the things you said? So we talked about three new call firefighter, call firefighters?
Yep.
There was somebody that wanted to be a call firefighter, that was too far away in Danvers, you didn't do, these three otherwise, where are they from? Topsfield or Danvers?
Nope, one's from Topsfield, one's from Danvers, and one's from Ipswich. So the, one from Topsfield is a man from, he lives near me. The one from Ipswich lives right on the line on North Street, and the one on, from Danvers lives by the Green Barrel, if you're, if you're really old, you know where that was. But anyway, down by, um, down by, um...
These are the same folks that we talked about?
State police barracks, yes.
They've been here, they've been with us now for three months?
Something like that.
Yes, 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 okay, okay.
So anyway, they're them, and then the person who lives on the other side of Danvers, we have, we're going through the interim process, there's no reason, maybe he'll move, I don't know, so I'm going to look at him.
But at this point, I understand, that, we know about these people already, they do that, okay.
Yep, yep, yep.
Question, the $2,500 you have listed here is not reflected on this sheet, that is a 2B, when we get the next version, we'll see that go from $2,500 to $5,000 for medical expenses.
I think that's what I detected.
Yes, I put it here because, yeah, it's my first time.
That's okay. So 55050, 55050 will have in the vision of $2,500.
55050 is going to have an addition.
Just aligning those two.
Okay.
Can I stay with this for a minute? Because I think it's important, it's on a map, a math problem going forward.
Yep.
Okay, so, and don't get me wrong, I'm thrilled that someone three hole punched my sheet, because that was one of my personal requests, but I don't know what number this is. So this is a B what?
Uh, B2, yeah.
A B2, okay. And so just in, in, for lack of a better phrase, in layman's terms, this is, this is explanatory, this is not the essential unfunded.
Right.
So these numbers, I think this is apples and oranges here, I think.
What the FinCom asked us to do is that anything that was above the 2% guideline, you had to come out and go onto that, that cover sheet.
On that B2 cover sheet.
That B2 cover sheet, that has a list, at this point, with just the Board of Selectmen budgets, it's totaling about $300,000. And then, there's also the, the above and beyond things, the unfunded, essential, essential unfunded, which there's currently two items on, because they're not currently existing in the budgets now, and those were both from the clerk's office. One was the software with the annual, and then the other was a...
I may be missing something, I'm concerned that we're not doing this one system. Been with you for two months, sorry. So, the medical, this isn't about how important the...
No, 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 I get it, I'm...
The medical supply, this is an increase in, in an other item?
A proposed other increase.
Okay, that, so that may be over guidelines.
It is over guidelines, yeah.
Okay, right, so that would, why wouldn't that go on in the essential unfunded?
It, because it, because it is on the form...
It's not mandated by a contract or something like that.
Well, that's different, but it's not.
I say it's not, that's, it's not essential.
No, that's why it goes on the central unfunded.
This ideally would go into the other, this should be in the budget, and the reason why is because before we can go on a call, we're mandated to establish and equip our ambulances based on the state OMS regs. We have to come up with money to stock the ambulance, or we can't.
So that is, is essential unfunded.
To me, it's essential unfunded, but because we have this ongoing issue with how you define what should be in here and what isn't, it's been segregated, so that we can have this conversation. So the first thing is...
But that's different, Kelly.
It could, you're right, it could go in the...
It could go, yes, we spoke.
Having it here for explanatory purposes is wonderful. Great, okay, but these, these are, be with me for a minute, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, these are apples and oranges, but they're being treated as apples and apples. This goes in, and again, if we've updated the vocabulary, you'll be with me. The reason, I don't think this is incredibly important, it shouldn't be passed, but this goes on the central unfunded, because it's not within guidelines.
I hear you.
But this should be in the budget, this is contractual obligation.
Right, yeah, correct.
This isn't in there, and it should be in there.
It should be on a salary and wage page, which is not part of this.
But these are explanatory pages, I'm not even talking about that, I don't care if we have a hundred of those. The critical issue, because it messes up the math, is what's in what I want to call the base budget, and what's not, and that's what's on the essential unfunded. So this should roll back into the base, because it's a contractual obligation.
But because it affects others, probably called out on this sheet.
It's okay, but the, the, it's not in here, unless I'm missing, the two grand should be in the base.
No, no, we were told anything that was above the 2% to pull it out, and so that's why we, that's why we did this sheet here.
I think there's a miscommunication.
It was, it was...
I won't belabor it at this meeting, but I'm concerned, because it's going to cause a big wave of a problem all the way through, if I'm right, maybe I'm not, or maybe something's changed. Because I always understood the finest, the finest guidelines to include contractual obligations, that's the base concept.
I, I, I...
Agree.
I asked the question directly, just to clarify, when they were doing the guidelines, and they did ask that everything that was above the 2% get pulled out.
Get explained, but...
I do agree with you that the $2,500 would probably fit best under the, the, under the essentials, when the first was presented to me, it just didn't even...
The $2,500 should not be in the base, because it's a new thing, doesn't mean it's unimportant, that's the whole point of the essential unfunded.
Right, so that...
So it should not be in the base, it should be in the essential unfunded.
It could only be in the base.
The two grand is the opposite.
But it could be in the base, if something else were offset it, and we still make the guidance. So it's not a new thing, it's just that the budget is out of whack, and presumably, we've called it out because it's over guideline, and there's no other way in the other budget to absorb it.
Okay, but, but so then, but then it tracks, the essential unfunded, it's a class, yeah.
That's what makes it go, yes, yeah.
Depends on, it's tomato, tomato. Either way, what we see moving forward with the process is it shouldn't affect the math, because we need to decide, we may be using, I, I don't think this would be, if this were a contractual, it is, 2,000 were contractual, and professionals, it is, but if it were, because, I think, because it's contractual, but it affects the other budget, it was called out. If it was other and included in the personnel, it would have, the 2,000 would be in there as base budget. That's what I was...
This is just anything that was in...
I think we ought to, we ought to have Marcus with Karen or something to just make sure, and if they've, if the current FinCom has a different perspective, then I'm done talking, but, but I'm just telling you, that's not traditionally how it's been done.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just ask, so I should, because I have a meeting with my FinCom, who's back tomorrow, early tomorrow morning, so that might be, so that's the question, that maybe that $2,500 is on...
Who are, who are they?
Shay and Eric Menzel.
Okay.
So, the, and then, I, I had, I had thought about that, and I had put that in, and I had put the 2,000, but now Kevin says I can't do that, but in, in the publications and conferences, the contractual $2,000, should I just leave it out of there?
Absolutely, I mean, yeah, my, my whole point is, we need to know what we're doing, and we need to do the same for everybody. If they want to do it differently, that's...
We've kept that safe for everybody, so that's what we've done.
But I always, I'm being redundant, but I'll be quiet right after. I've always understood that the base budget is kind of like what we have, we don't, there's no, there's always a choice, but in the general sense, we've signed the contract, we're obligated to fund that two grand.
And I specifically asked the question, though, and I, and I used the, I used two examples, I used one trash contract, which is going up $20,000, and I used my own department audit, which is going up a couple thousand dollars, and what we were told is everything where the contractual out was, we'd be called out, and they were doing this specifically because of...
Pause for a second, there's a big difference between calling it out, these, see, these are relatively new invention, the, the, the B2 and whatever.
Yeah.
These are explanatory, that's wonderful, that's just saying, hey guys, this is something we should talk about.
Yeah.
That's functionally different than the intention of the unfunded, which is, if this is stuff that's over the base, we need to bring it, we need to screen it, thumbs up, thumbs down, and go to town meeting, we're not, it's okay. I'm not telling you to be argumentative, I just...
Oh, no, no.
Since we were talking about, what is the contractual part that gets that $2,000, is that transportation?
It's in the, it's in the Chief Employment Contract.
Which one, what is the $2,000 for?
Professional Development.
Conferences?
Yeah.
Oh, Professional Development.
In the prior Chief's contract, that was, wasn't included.
Because we have publications and memberships, but as you point out, it doesn't fit in there, this is Professional Development, is that, is that, it's going to be a new line item that's not here at all?
No, it's not here.
Excuse me, excuse me, it isn't, it's 100. 100 is, is for, is for transportation, travel. 100 is for travel expenses and meetings, it's not for Professional Development. Oh, what is that?
There's two lines on there, I think there's...
I'm looking, it's 57 100, 57 100, 2,000.
Publications, memberships, or...
I thought, unless it's, it's like a 5100, I thought it would be on the $100.
Yeah, the $100.
It's against the $100, right?
We've got the, we've got the...
We've got the question, yes, yeah. But we got the same... Somebody let me know what you say.
We'll get in touch with the finance committee and clarify before.
All right, you have to go on a conference call.
We've got the same problem with the fire department in terms of, in terms of salaries and wages that we've got with the police department because we don't have those contracts.
Right, right.
Established, okay?
Oh, yes.
There's going to be some additions to that stuff.
Well, well, how we've handled that in the past is we would make a calculation and use a salary reserves to make sure that we're not spending it somewhere else.
So, it's in the budget.
Yeah.
It's in there, it's just not under the departmental.
Okay, got you, yeah, got you, yeah.
And that would be the next step that we would do after we meet with the board, review the budgets. And then we figure with the finance team, what has to go in this, what was approved, what wasn't, where do we stand? We would meet with FinCom and make sure everyone's on the same page. This is a perfect question to run by Karen Dow as well, you know, how do we define it? Make sure that we're all on the same page. When we are not sure, I have asked department heads and they have done this, to err on the side of caution. When in doubt, pull it out, explain it. It's a lot easier to put it in after everybody's acknowledged what it is, why it's there, how it's justified, than it is to assume it'll be in there and then have everybody say, you know, you're being too presumptuous. Yeah, you know, we don't, everything's out on the table, this is the most detailed budget information.
And, and these are also just the worksheets that were turned back from the department heads. When you get your, when you get your budget request next week, which will be the actual Excel format. And it does have the other columns in it for the, for the town administration board segment and the FinCom. And it also has a note on the side that requested increase of $2,500, requested increase. So, that we're, we're showing the errors.
So, you're going to clean up all these issues on the next one we get?
Yes, yes, yes.
And we're going to get an Excel.
Exactly.
It will, so budget, you know, this, this, this was agreed upon the way we did this is that this was the departmental request. This is what the department heads gave to us, that as your board of selectmen, you said, hey, we want to know what the board select, what the departments of the board of selectmen are submitting. And that's why they have photocopies of exactly what they submitted. But this is all getting, it's getting transcribed electronically into a, into a spreadsheet. It'll be the same thing as what you got last year. It will be updated, so it'll be updated next week when you get it. And then it will be updated towards the end of the process as well.
John, John, I worked here last year, so it's good to hear. We're going to get, is it going to be a separate file for each department?
No, it's one, it's one file, there's a couple of worksheets within the files. No, it's, it all is confined onto one tab. It breaks it down in terms of what the other costs are, what the salary and wages are, what by public safety versus government, intergovernmental. So, it has some different tabs that show that type of, those, those type of categories.
But there's not like a tab for fire, for police, for weights and damages.
No, no, because it was.
So, how do we remind each of the individual?
You scroll down the list.
It's the same, so these numbers here.
So, it's all in one, essentially, they're all in one spreadsheet.
Yes, yes.
And it's all, it's all separated out. And, and these numbers here are, these are standard numbers by the state in terms of the board of selectmen, if I were to vote it over, go over that, it would be 122, not 122. And so, it's just, it works the same for the format.
That's part of the account number, is it not?
Yes, it is part of the account.
It's one of the columns, it's one of the columns of this great big.
Very first column.
There's one great big spreadsheet that has all of the line items in it.
Well, you see it already.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, but it's all in one spreadsheet, excellent, okay.
I've got a question for Jen.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't have anything to do with budget.
Okay.
Tell me how you feel about the way the department's going after you've been sitting there running things for a while.
Oh, thanks for asking, yeah.
Morale, what, tell me about.
I'm not going to lie, the last year, last year and a half has been really, was difficult for all of us. And we were attacked on many fronts, publicly, privately, and behind our backs. We, we had transitioned, I mean, it was a 10-month process from me, from the day I submitted my application to the town, I got sworn in. I think that right now people feel really good, they feel really lifted. They are excited to come to calls, they're looking forward to that, they're challenging each other to do better on different things. It's a really nice mixture of people. We have some big holes to fill that are coming up experience-wise. They're, they weren't the highest performers as far as times coming to calls, but they certainly were the more experienced people. But people are really stepping up, you know, people are looking at paramedic school, people are looking at getting further certifications and inspections and.
So, you've got some call firefighters that are responding to things that you need to have done?
Yeah, yes, yep, yep, yep.
That's good news, that's exciting stuff.
So, you mentioned, we went back to this fire alarm system that you paid $2,500 for the service last year. So, that $2,500 is going to come out of.
It's going to come out.
Should we kind of save it?
Make, no, can you make sure I say the right words? It was, I, I, we had no knowledge of it at all because it was, it was maybe included in the police budget or when it before when we were over here. And so, we never, that was never an expense of ours. And so, we're going to, we paid it out of our budget and then we're going to, so we've never paid it before. This is the first time we've paid it. And we're going to do a reserve fund transfer at the end of the year to put the money back in the budget.
FY18, where was, where was it being paid for before that?
I think the rec was.
Oh, the rec was also paying for the $2,500.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, some other towns, anyway, it doesn't matter, they bill for their, bill for that, but we've never billed.
Okay, got it, okay.
Sounded kind of a wash then.
Well, your, your letter to Great Hill created a little bit of anxiety.
Oh, I know, that's okay, that's okay.
I know you know.
Yeah, no, it's okay, it's all okay, it's okay.
Great Hill got a letter because we're one of the outfits up there that has that alarm system. And she, her letter said, we're not going to do that anymore. So, the board was, is looking at having to hire somebody to do it in place of.
It's okay, but all the hardware is there, it's just a service, so, yeah, it's okay.
The $20,000 is what the RACC has been paying to have those things maintained. So, part of that $20,000 may very well be yours.
Maybe, maybe. I'm out of here, you guys.
Bye, goodbye.
Bye.
I hope you. I hope so. Good night, everybody.
Good night, boy.
Chief, as you know, there's lots of pressure on that.
I might.
And so, as we've asked others, I'd like you to think about what you can do to reduce the spending. As was said with the chief, it's a change perhaps in services that we provide or whatever. But we, we need to be thinking about what we can do to save money.
Or make more.
If you'd like to, we're not in the business of making money. That's businesses, we're a government.
Offset cost.
Save my offset cost.
In the last, in the last five years, we brought in $255,000 in the ambulance fees and $100,000 in fire permitting fees. So, there's all that money that, that's $355,000 went to the general fund. So, this year to date for the ambulance, it's $38,000 and it's $12,000 for the fire alarm. The fire alarm will go down a little bit because in 2015, Massachusetts adopted a code by now, now the building inspector permits fire and sprinkler alarms, so that's a change for us, we don't permit them anymore. So, the fire.
The building inspector.
Building inspector does. So, with our review, he approves, he approves them and so you should see his income come up.
Well, he is, well, he doesn't see the income.
In money, no, I know, I know, but.
It's the same thing, it goes into the general fund.
His receipts. But you'll see his receipts.
So, it won't be, he can see any difference, right? More workers.
But they'll turn it in, they turn it in, so, yeah, but you'll see an increase.
Yeah. It's a transfer.
But, but coming back to.
I understand.
We need to cut down. So, if you think about those things, he has some things off for now, as the chief, just like I got to fly, but, but please be thinking about that.
Yeah, it would be the same extent, it would be, yeah, yeah. It would be life savings.
Let us know what things we've cut down, what they cost, how we need to, thank you.
You're welcome. What's that? It is a badge.
This one doesn't have to be on here.
Yeah, I bet people. It does not, that's a, that's a problem too, because I've had, I've done a couple of calls at gunpoint and I've done.
So, this is.
I've had a nice.
It's a personnel, right?
But no, it doesn't, which is funny, I bought the same level of protection that the police, you know, I bought.
It's still, it's in the budget though.
Advice, because I don't know anything about ours.
Which is explaining the change, right?
Yeah, so instead of helmet here, instead of down here.
Yeah, it's up here.
So, you could, because you can get a very much more expensive one, you know, and then.
This one just says that it doesn't have to be on there.
That would.
No discussion on this.
I didn't get helmets yet, the helmets are really expensive too, and I'm not sure that they would fit.
If they feel that it doesn't need to be in, then that's fine.
But, you know, the bottom line is if there's an effect, we need to go on and see.
That's the reason why we put them up.
To changing the philosophy of all that, this change, and that, that's sure.
Yep, I mean, if they don't want.
I would have ten years, but I would have said absolutely no way, we have no, no business being in there, in that situation.
Let me ask, let me ask Kevin.
That's way different.
There's no change to that. The only thing that's changing is like changing what you call wages and putting.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Does that require all of the.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of domestic stuff, a lot of, you know, family stuff.
Uh, boots.
You know, it's really emotional, but it's really dangerous. Yeah, we've been, we've done actually some active shooter training at Masco with.
I don't think this is going to change.
That was actually really in white.
You stepped out.
Oh, John wants to sit there, sure.
He stepped out.
He thought it was a good time.
Last break, she was convinced me to buy that vest. That was the drill that we were. I know, I know, that's what, I didn't understand all that, but.
Make a note and make sure if you see that in the, in the next version.
I wonder if when a person came, everyone stayed.
Make sure we get that integrated with the next redo.
I want to buy the sheets.
I know, and actually, because our dispatcher was, before we got regional dispatcher, dispatcher, whatever, he failed to send help.
Once it's getting into development or.
Yeah, those are eligible.
Even the.
Did we have anything further for the fire department? Call us back to order, please. Anything further for the chief? Thank you very much.
You're welcome, I'm just going to stay, right, is that what?
Yeah.
It's a public meeting. Even the fire chief.
And you are.
They did a tape if you want.
And you're on YouTube tomorrow.
It's a fact there.
I said that.
So, the last of tonight's budget discussions, is the board selecting, correct?
Yes, it is, thank you very much. Trusty sidekick over here, Donna, to help me explain all of this. You know, one of the easiest things might be just to, I'm skipping around a little bit, but the PEG advisory is pretty clear cut.
Oh, yeah.
Because I know we have a number of different budget items under the board of selectmen, but this might be an easy one to get out of the way, I hope. What I've done for the PEG cable advisory, Department 157, is we got an estimate from our Foxford Cable Television. They have given us a proposal to increase their, their costs. It's basically a total impact of $5,000, $2,000 of that would be for increases for programming expenses. And then the other $3,000 is in anticipation of expenses to move and set up the equipment at the town hall once it's completed. So, the difference or the impact is $5,000. And so, we called that out on the B2 form. This is a separately funded line on, it's not funded through the general fund. However, if you recall, last year, we had a, a town meeting, we, we were required to establish a separate appropriation process and a budgeting process for these funds. So, this is why you have this this year, but just to be clear, it's not a general fund item. The funding for this budget is essentially from the receipts that we collect from the cable, it's the cable advisory. It's the fee, the franchise fees that everyone sees on their cable bill. And so, basically, this allows us to continue at the existing level of operations for next year. And then I will be putting together a separate capital budget request as part of the budget presentation with regard to any equipment that needs to be purchased from the PEG fund for the new town hall. So, that'll be separate and I'll just include that with our capital budget discussion and a future.
So, my only question though is that within the 5,000, there seems to be two components. And one will continue as operating and the other one time. So, is, is there any way without doing anything negative to our accounting system where we could have it on two items?
Yeah, well, that's a good point, I was just thinking that we can just cut it out on this front siege, on this cover. I mean, but they're both professional services items, it's just they're allocated. So, maybe on this one, do two different.
Separate.
Yeah, when you go next year, you won't.
One is recurring, one is not.
Right, when I officially inflate the operating budget forward.
Well, okay, so just to be clear, if we call it out on the B2 form, are you suggesting that we would add another, another row to the budget? Or that we just call it out?
We're not going to speak anymore about the B2 form tonight, but I think when the, yeah, well, ends up in the budget itself that as appropriate in our general ledger system, there'd be a line that's for equipment or something that's, that's clear that that's a one-time.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a one-time expense.
Okay.
So, so you don't like automatically increase it or carry it forward or whatever.
Does that, Kevin, is there.
It's like you have, you have postage, you have supplies, there's going to be another.
Personal services, personal thing.
There is, there is the last one, I mean, you're right, one that goes away.
Non-referring issue.
But they could throw it into the.
It's just a form of, of the, of the.
Question, what does PEG stand for?
Public Education Government. Theoretically, you could have three channels.
I guess it's the.
Three channels.
Public access.
You could potentially have three channels to cover the three different categories.
But it's all basically cable.
It's the cable services.
I still have an ongoing request for cable as the technology improves that. We'd be told if they ever reach a point where the selectmen's meetings can be set up as a program. So, you can send your DVR for every Monday night. I mean, this is not like that.
It's a titling issue of the cable thing so that your DVR recognizes it by title.
Yeah, as a program.
Rather than just a time because they don't have that.
I hope that if that's an easy thing to do, if you, I'll make a note here, but if I forget to follow. A quick note, I can forward that to Brad.
They never, up till last budget season, they didn't have the capability.
Oh, okay.
Because I keep asking every, what's yours?
It's a piece of equipment that puts a tag, that puts out a program guide and it goes to all the services that. So, instead of just saying Foxford Cable and then it's just a blank all the way across and then you have to go there to look and see what's coming up, it would actually put it on as a feed that tells you what the, what the programs are going to be on your box. So, when you hit that channel guide, it actually tells you what the programs are going to be.
Yeah, so you can.
Then your DVR can.
So, it's like Chicago.
Right now, it just, it's there.
It really would be a great development on it.
That would be huge.
Well, if we have the equipment now, we can do it, and if not, then we're, we'll be talking about equipment.
The horizon.
We already have the quotes for FY19 capital budget request on that, so we can get that. Okay, so that's it for that one. Okay, so where should we begin, Donna?
I don't care, I don't.
Let's begin at the beginning.
Selecting.
I sound like Lewis Carroll. Let's see, select in department. The only, well, the only real items here that are above guidelines on this particular budget represent, actually, there's only one change above, it's all within guidelines as it reads right now. But the one change is that we are moving the wages for Donna's position back up to salary. So, we're changing that location, but there's no change to impact of it. Besides that, everything is pretty straightforward, I believe. Donna, are there anything that you wanted to call out or?
No.
Everything is within budget, so.
Could you help me understand what, where, what line is really what to do, what you just said?
So, my K was under wage, says wage, VA executive secretary.
Over here at 63,000.
So, it's just being moved up to purchasing development.
Under salary.
Under salary instead of hourly.
It's just a class.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, oh, it's not class, it's just, yeah.
No, hold on.
It's the same K, it's just, I don't know, whatever. Okay, that was it for that one.
An increase is a reflection of the fact that it's, it's a grade.
Right, we only put it on there because it was moving from wage to salary. Others and she, so we didn't know that it didn't.
But it still is an.
It's the same.
It's an increase.
Well, yeah.
I'm just going to call it out for what it is, just to be clear. So, in the process of moving it to salary, the grade step changes and that is the reflection of the $3,000.
Which would have happened if it had been changed.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, but it would have been the same either way.
So, even if it had been down under wages, that same thing would have happened?
Same exact impact.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
We're just moving the position of that position, so it's under salary.
This confused me because it included both the change to a different category and the step change, grade step change.
Right.
So, this, the number reflects the grade step change only. So this, the number reflects the grade step change only. In other words, moving to, from wage to salary, it doesn't have any number change.
The numbers, yes. Yes.
Exactly.
Not at all.
The numbers are exactly the same.
Yeah, that makes sense for now.
But it suggests legally we have moved Donna's position from one of a wage to a salary position.
From an hourly wage to salary.
Yes.
And based on dollars alone?
There's no change, nothing, nothing else.
Um, okay, so the order of selectmen, the other one, um.
Next one. Selectman special, selectman.
Now, we just talked about the, as you have it set out here, the, the sort of kind of money. But we, we need to be realistic also because, uh, we, we know that the position of wage executive assistant is changing because Sue is not, is not going to be in it.
Yes.
So you, I'm not asking to make any changes, but just so we're all aware, that that number, uh.
Is subject to change.
Is subject to change, okay? Everybody on, going on that?
Yes.
Yeah, and we have, the example, one of the, um, uh, resumes we got, some of the. Very young and inexperienced individual and might not command as much of a salary as the other one who has somewhat more experience. So it will depend upon the actual choice we make and what we negotiate at that time.
Correct.
If the position remained the same, order of magnitude.
That's what it would be.
If the position remains the same and the grade remains the same, theoretically, often you put a person at the beginning step because they're not experienced and tops will do enough job. But we'll, we'll find out. Okay, that, the only point was that that's, we know that that will probably change one way or the other.
Our projection assumes status quo, and when we are aware of the specific change, we will make the adjustment accordingly. Until then, we don't want to underbridge ourselves.
And all of the, all of the longevity is for Donna, okay.
Calling it out.
Well, it, it, nothing in the fifty-four, in other words, that's, okay.
Jasmine.
Selectman special.
Okay, only one change, SP, S and P, selectman special, yes, training. Um, I am requesting that as a, you know, I have it as a B two, but again, based on our conversation earlier, might be an essential unfunded, um, I'm requesting that there be an increase in the legal budget.
Right, so it's not in the budget right now.
It's not in the.
Right now it's level funded. So what, so what is our experience? So we're January, essentially, right, so what happens?
We are projected to be at least ten thousand dollars, um, of a deficit in this.
But how we, how we, my, I wanna make sure that this is adequate. I mean, the town meeting can vote up or down, but I want, I think that our budget request should be fully funded.
What we think is, what we think is.
Based on the actual spread. So, 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 and if I say something like projected, actually, you're gonna throw the pen at me, I know that.
No, no.
What I mean is, given six months actual.
Yeah.
Projecting that out, it's not even necessarily a times two, because we're seeing an increased trend.
That's correct.
So it might be more. So how do we project, that ten thousand is enough?
We took the first, we took the first four months of our actuals.
Yeah, okay, good.
We divided them by four, came up with a number, multiplied that by twelve.
Yeah.
So that we can get to a number and we, and the ten thousand is what is that projected amount.
So, so my.
And there's also a couple of other items that are sort of closing out. Being that the water, the water treatment plant, the appeals for that.
Matters, I agree, right.
Um, one of the biggest, um, drivers of this number is of course, which we talked about the other night, the increase in public records requests, open meeting law complaints, um, those are adding up. We spent almost three thousand dollars so far.
Right now, so my concern is that it's, it's not a, it's not level on the first four, it's not the first four months times three, that it's going up like this.
That would be my concern as well, but without having, without being able to predict that, it's, it's a difficult. I mean, that's, that's the question. When we get closer.
Maybe when we get, when we get six months, maybe when we get, when we close up six months, we see whether it's been.
Exactly.
Even or whether it's continued.
And it'll fluctuate up or down. I mean, the first, you know, depending on what the complaints are, if we've got an appeal from cons column or a specific case. Um, I anticipate that this is a safe number for us to assume at this point in that throughout the process, we will be checking that number again and seeing, are we in alignment like we would with our projections as well?
And I, last call on this, but I think this is an important, uh, item also. I, I, I do think it's important that this clarity here, you know, but I think people ought to know that, uh, what's going on at town hall and that there's a cost to certain actions, and it's a direct cost to certain actions. And again, town meeting will vote up or town meeting will vote down, but I think our proposal should reflect what we're experiencing. It should be adequately funded. We have obligations to protect the town at times.
What was the thing on the water, can I reference this, the water treatment plant?
Uh, well, we did a water treatment plant. We had a big protest, we had a New York big protest.
Oh, the, the, the legal issue of that, thank you.
And there's also some, um, Donna, going away that's been resolved. So there are some cases that have been brought up before the town that are being resolved.
Yeah. But they're tend, they're tends to be the, that type of case, the new, the new, there's a new experience at the town relative to open meeting law and public records request. The other stuff, you, you never know, there's gonna be four legal cases in here, there's gonna be none, there's gonna be, you know, that.
Those up and down.
Over time, it equals out. There's a new factor.
So we did experience.
So does that, everything else is within guidelines and is level funded in that, um, selectman special budget?
Next.
Next, um, Board of Selectmen for, um, rubbish collection and solid waste. Um, we've been talking about this in.
What's the number right there?
Where's that?
Um, four thirty.
It was not a spreadsheet.
This is JRM.
Near the end.
The last.
Recycling expense?
Yeah.
This one, recycling expense?
Refuse, refuse, expense and recycling.
Yeah.
Refuse is, is the first one.
It's, it's a ten-year contract. The first five years has, was at one amount and then it, um, in the second five years, it increases by twenty thousand, one hundred twelve dollars. And it's been listed here, um. It should be the last page of the chart.
Oh, last full page, I, I am right past that.
So again, it's, it's Mark, under your assumption.
Yeah.
Like your understanding of the process as it's been in the past, do you feel that this is an other expense line item that just needs to be called out?
Which?
This increase, it's a contractual obligation.
Yeah.
JRM is our trash holler.
Yeah, to me, it's.
Is it supposed to be in the base budget or not?
It always must. Again, they, they change things.
It was, but. I, I think that that's the case, but we're not clarifying it.
So to me, it's a contractual obligation, so it's in the base budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, an asterisk, I think the B one, B two is great, I'm not, don't get me wrong.
Oh, right, right.
But I need to clarify that that's.
Should it be a base budget or not?
Yeah, it should be a base budget with an, figuratively, an asterisk.
Right.
Something that says this is the increase in the contractual obligation.
And that was our question, and the answer that we got was pull it all out and then as it's agreed to, then we push it back in.
But, but conceptually, there's nothing agreed to. What are we not gonna get tracked? Yeah, I'm not being sarcastic.
They're just, right, no, 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 no. I think that there, there's an intent to be fully transparent
That's okay, but that.
with everything that is above zero and without the assumption that it will automatically be.
Yeah, but that's why, that's why these explanatory sheets are great.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's totally transparent.
But the question is, can we?
It's, it's oblig, what's obligatory? Again, nothing's obligatory. It's gonna be passed on top, but in concept, it's committed. Maybe that's a better word.
Right. One of the questions, right. One of the things that I think we should figure out before the next step is whether or not the expectation of the Finkham, whether or not their expectation is that by having these meetings and by talking them out, is there expectation that we would take this contractual item, put it into the base budget, still call it out, but put the money back into the base budget based on the fact that it is contractual? Or does it stay out for them to say, yes, that's contractual, it should go in, we're gonna prove it?
Yeah, just, just stupid. I don't think I'm wrong. And in, maybe in the last year or two, I guess.
There was, there was definitely a decision to make a change because of the, the, um, the TWU team. That's how it was discussed, to make sure everything was out in the open and there is that.
It, it's not, I'm not finding it being open, but the math doesn't work. It's, it's, I would, with respect for all, all seven of them, if they were all here, I'd be happy to say the same thing, the Finkham meeting. They, then they've changed the whole essence of the scheduled unfunded sheet.
There needs to be better definition of what those things are.
It's A plus B equals C, that's, it's, it's.
Cause it's not cleared out.
Yeah.